You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Well, good morning, everyone in the room and online. I will call the meeting to order this morning because our Chair and Vice Chair are not present. And so it's going to require process, but before I jump into that process, I do want to acknowledge that we are conducting our business today on the unceded territory of the Tushat and the Hoopa Cheset. And so I want to acknowledge and share my gratitude for that. I also want to provide notice to attendees that this meeting is being livestreamed on YouTube and can be viewed through the Regional District website. I will do introductions around the room and then move to online. And at the conclusion of that, we will, I will ask for nominations for somebody to chair this meeting. And that way, at that point, I will hand it off. So I'm Daniel Sayon, I'm the CAO for the ACRD, and I will move to my left.
Good morning, everyone. Heather Zener, Manager of Administrative Services.
Good morning, everyone. Jody Frank, Acting Manager of Solid Waste Services.
Good morning. I'm Mike Sparrow, I'm the Regional Director for Cherry Creek.
I'm Renny LaCursier, the alternate for Spurout Lake.
Cindy Sola, alternate for Debbie Hagerd, for City of Port Alberni.
Good morning. Cynthia Dick, General Manager of Administrative Services.
And Jenny Brown, General Manager of Community Services.
And good morning, Alex Stayer, Planning Manager.
Online, if I could start with Beta.
Beta Sigga, Area C.
Thank you. And Susan?
Good morning, everyone. Susan Roth, for Beaver Creek.
And Fred?
Fred Boyko, Electoral Area Director for Beaufort.
Thank you. Kirsten?
Morning. Kirsten Johnson, Director for Tolkot Nation.
Thank you. And Shari?
Shari Minions, Mayor for the City of Port Alberni.
Thank you. And Bob?
Bob Schmidt, alternate Director for Mary Banfield.
Last but not least, Tom.
Yes, good morning. Tom Steer, Director, appointed by the District of Tofino.
Thank you. So as I indicated this morning, we are without a Chair and Vice Chair. And as such, I'll call for nominations on who could Chair.
I'd like to move that Mike Sparrow will be the Chair today.
Mike, are you interested in sharing today?
Sure, I'll turn the meeting.
You are. So we have a motion, and sorry, that was seconded by Cindy Sola. I will call a vote on having Mike Sparrow. No, it's not frozen. It looked frozen, sorry. The screen looked frozen for a moment. I will call a vote on having Director Sparrow chair the meeting. All those in favor? All those opposed? And a carries. So we will take just a few minutes here, so Director Sparrow can reposition. And we'll hand over the agenda to Director Sparrow. Okay, thank you for your patience. As I moved, my laptop is still working, so we're all in good form today. You got there? Okay. So move on with our agenda, what we called the order, approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions from the corporate officer?
No additions.
We have any additions from the Directors? I don't want Fred to. Okay, no. Saying none. Can we have approval of the agenda, approved by Director Sola, seconded by? Director LaCursier, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor? Okay, opposed, let's carry. Great. Any declarations, report, from the Directors? Saying none, we should move on to the minutes. Minutes for a committee of the whole meeting, March 5th. Any errors or omissions? Seeing none, so I make the motion to move. Moved by Director Sola, seconded by? Director LaCursier, thank you. Opposed in favor? Opposed, great. Request for decision, request for decisions, solid waste management plan, engagement update, and next steps. And that would be Jody. Take it away.
Alright, good morning. Online, can you see the presentation? All good, perfect. So, good morning, Committee of the Whole, staff and members of the public. My name is Jody Frank. I am the Acting Solid Waste Manager. And I've also been the Project Lead for the Solid Waste Management Plan. So, before I get started, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that the subject matter within my presentation today represents the communities of the Alberni-Clackwat Regional District, which are within the traditional territories of the New Tell, New First Nations. So, my presentation overview today is around the Solid Waste Management Plan. I'm going to go over the public engagement summary that took place in fall 2024, talk about the results and what we heard, and then move on to the recommendations outlined in your report and the timeline considerations. So when we look at the Solid Waste Management Plan, as a bit of a refresher, so this is a piece of work mandated by the Ministry of Environment. All regional districts are required to have a solid waste management plan. And the Ministry outlines a four-step process for completing a solid waste management plan. So step one of the plan and the work that we've undertaken to date. So, that began in 2023 where we informed the Ministry and members of the public that we were undertaking the update to the plan. And then from there, we were able to form the Advisory Committee. From there, we developed the Solid Waste Systems Overview Report, which was followed by the first round of public engagement that took place in 2023 from October to December. That allowed us to collect some baseline data and help inform the goals that would form the Solid Waste Management Plan. From there, we've moved on to step two, so that's setting the plan direction, the guiding principles, which the Board endorsed last year. From there, the Advisory Group developed the solid waste gap analysis. And then we were able to form and develop some goals and targets that would really help measure success of the plan. And that is in line with the Province Goals as well as other regional districts. That takes us to step three. This is where we are within the plan development phase at the moment. So we've developed the draft strategies supported by the Options and Feasibility Report. This also reflects that gap analysis that occurred in step two. And more recently, we went out to public engagement to talk to the public and gain insights on those draft strategies and feasibility. From there, we will, we have taken that feedback and we are in that review and revise phase. After that is complete, we'll move on to a third round of public engagement, moving on to step four, where the plan is finalized and approved by the Board, the Province, and then moving on to implementation and plan adoption. So, phase two of public engagement, as I mentioned, this occurred last October through to mid-November. This really gave staff an opportunity to engage with the various communities of the district and really gather that information on the draft strategies and to gauge public priorities around solid waste management. It also helped us really inform the public of the process to date and inform that big picture analysis of what the purpose of the plan is. So as a bit of a refresher, the eight strategies that we took to the public. So the first one is that foundational strategy around education and behavior change, which really applies to all the strategies. Strategy number two was around establishing or expanding resource recovery centers and eco-depos. Number three is around business and organization diversion programming. And number four, specific to remote and First Nation communities, and it's around organics management infrastructure. Number five, focused on multi-stream diversion programs. This looked at single-family households without diversion programming or multifamily buildings. It also looked at events happening within our region as well as public spaces. Strategy six focuses on construction and demolition waste diversion. Number seven is around products not included in product stewardship programs, so items like mattresses or hazardous waste. And then number eight is around residual management. And that looks at how our Alberni Valley landfill and West Coast landfill are managed to meet our regular regulatory requirements. So, when we look at the engagement process, our main mechanism was that online survey. That was supported by a webinar, which provided individuals access to the same information if they were not able to attend the open house events. So we had about 203 responses to that online survey. In addition to that, our in-person sessions, so we had 19 meetings in total. So, we hosted, of those 13, sorry, of those 19, 13 of them were council and community presentations. And then we hosted the six in-person open house events. So we visited 10 different communities and had a whole realm of different input from our committee as well as the public and different community organizations. When we look at the online survey responses and where the majority of them came from, so 90% came from individuals living in a single-family household. 64% came from one to two people living in a home. And then about 34% of three or more people living in the households. So the highest response rate came from Spurout Lake at 36%, followed by Beaver Creek at 29%. About 9% from City of Port Alberni, followed by Beaufort, which was about 8%. Cherry Creek was six, and then Tofino and Uqulit were tied at about 4.5% of the responses. We did not receive any responses from Banfield or our First Nation communities. When we look at the promotion of our engagement sessions, so engagement was hosted from October 10th to November 20th. Our main platform for engagement was our Let's Connect webpage that was focused on the Solid Waste Management Plan. And during that engagement period, we had over 800 visitors access the site. In addition to that, our social media reached over 3,000 interested clicks, I guess you would call them. So through our information about the open houses or just campaigns about the solid waste management plan, that received a very high response rate. And we used a variety of other mechanisms to get the word out that we were engaging on the solid waste management plan. So, print ads, radio ads, static displays, and built-in certs. So, as we get to the most supported strategies, the top three, so the sitting at the top of strategy seven, those are those items not included in product stewardship programs, followed by business and organizational waste diversion program, followed by construction and demolition. So those are the top three. And then, from there, we have strategy eight, which was landfill management, two around those resource recovery centers, and strategy one being education and behavior change programs. Strategy five and strategy four received the least amount of support. And just touching on strategy five specifically, so there was a trend from the feedback that was primarily from electoral areas. This is where residents expressed opposition to multi-stream diversion programs, particularly the option for curbside collection. So it's important to note that this strategy also includes those other key initiatives, such as the multifamily programs, as well as public event and outside space diversion opportunities. So while this strategy received mixed support, the opposition was concentrated to those electoral areas. And the concerns were centered around cost and feasibility in rural settings. It's also important to note that through the engagement process, all support was demonstrated for those other actions within the strategy. One of the key takeaways from engagement, particular to this strategy and some others, is that additional engagement, education, and further two-way discussions are really important. It gives us a chance to help clarify where different elements of this strategy could be implemented. Also, the need to provide cost-benefit analysis and presenting different options and solutions, and really hosting more dialogue to help with the decision-making and to help us refine and inform waste management strategies to ensure that they're both practical and publicly accepted. So additional key takeaways, so more effective messaging. So we did understand that there is a need to clarify and better define some of the terms that were used through engagement. So when we look at terms like solid waste, mandatory source separation, and residual management, there just needs to be better clarity of what those definitions actually mean. Also, when we look at landfill literacy, understanding that when you take waste to the landfill, it's not just about crossing the scale. There's a number of different activities that happen with landfill operations from environmental monitoring to, there's just a lot that goes on to operating a landfill. So understanding those cost implications is well is really important for the public to understand. And that leads us to those financial considerations. So there is an interest, specifically, not specifically, sorry, there is an interest from our engagement that we heard from electoral areas that there is that interest in understanding the financial and economics when we are determining solid waste strategies. So other common themes that were heard were around for us to make sure that we are partnering with our provincial and federal partners and advocating for regulations to reduce plastic at the source. So this is looking at products coming in to our stores. Also, to ensure that we are promoting locals, so partnering with businesses and industry and nonprofits where we can. And for us to be innovative, specific, and regional in our approaches when it comes to waste management strategies and programs. There is also the concern for rising costs and increased taxes. So with new programs, new services, there's those concerns for increased costs. So for us to look for grant and funding opportunities where applicable. So, as we talk about next steps, I think it's important for us just to revisit the purpose of the plan and our main objectives. So it's not just about ticking that box for the Ministry and submitting a plan. There, one of the main objectives is also for us to create that environmental responsibility for our communities. So providing effective waste management solutions is another key aspect of the plan. As well as a good comprehensive plan provides us that financial leverage for being able to secure funding opportunities for things like landfill upgrades, operational improvements, and new waste diversion programs. So the more information that's included into the plan means that we also have a better chance of being successful for future grant opportunities as well. So as we move forward, and the report before you offers some recommendations. And we've identified some gaps that exist that, so they include the Sort and Go Center and the no long-term tenure, the West Coast landfill, and construction and demolition, new opportunities arising in that space. So when we look at the Sort and Go Center, and one of the considerations there, so staff is recommending that we add an additional 18 to 24 months to the timeline of the plan. So when we look at the Sort and Go Center, the ACRD does not have a long-term tenure agreement for use of the landfill. Discussions with Sashat have been established through the Landfill Working Group. And these discussions have been productive and positive. And we require additional time to really be able to determine that clear path forward to make sure we're aligning with Sashat's community priorities and also adhering to our environmental obligations and regulatory compliances. So during that 18 to 24-month time, staff would like to work on an implementation plan, continue working on an implementation plan to address the concerns raised by Sashat so that we can confirm support for the long-term use of the site. It's also important to note that if a long-term agreement doesn't move forward, that contingency planning needs to happen as well. So staff needs to explore alternative waste management strategies for the transfer station, or if we need a transfer station, and potential out-of-region disposal. Moving on to the West Coast landfill, so there's been many recent changes to this site, including upgrades to our tipping area. But we've also added the addition of organics processing as well as biosolids processing. This requires additional infrastructure improvements and an updated design, operations, and closure plan, also known as our DOCP. So again, staff is recommending that a 18 to 24-month period be extended to our planned timeline. This will allow staff to scope out the project, procure consultants, complete the work, and then undergo the regulatory review and approval process. Having this information included in the plan also allows that financial piece. So the more that goes into the plan around the infrastructure and operational improvements means that there is that better capacity for us to borrow for the future. Construction and demolition, waste management. So back in 2024, the Board approved the Synergy Foundation's Vancouver Island Coast Ecosystem Project. So if this application is successful, this scope of work will explore innovative waste management strategies to enhance recycling and waste diversion opportunities in the construction and demolition space. This will really help guide and refine the plan as well as refine elements in strategy six, which looks specifically at construction and demolition waste. This project could uncover cost savings and different local processing options, as well as foster community collaboration. So working with the different business sectors and community members within the CND space is also one of the key benefits for this project. A couple of other considerations based on engagement was around for us to understand better community-specific waste composition data. So during engagement, we shared waste generation data specific to the region, but there was a desire to hear more specific community-based information. And being able to share that information will help inform our education efforts and help communicate on a community-specific basis. Also, looking at our engagement program, so our, sorry, our education program. Our education program continues to grow year over year. And I think the public engagement, the two phases that we've hosted, has given us some really great information to help refine our education program and enables us to have some of that targeted education for our campaigns to really help with public support. We also understand that our education needs to include more of the financial impacts specific to landfill operations and diversion programs, understanding the costs of what happens if we don't continue to increase diversion at our landfills. So in summary, staff is requesting the additional time so that we can include some of these key aspects to be able to incorporate into our plan, just to make it more comprehensive. And so, just to quickly run through, those key elements are better clarifying the future of the AV Sort and Go Center, the DOCP, identifying those potential new strategies with the construction and demolition sector. And then during that period, that gives us some more time to look at community-specific waste composition analysis and then expanding our education. In the meantime, it doesn't mean that work needs to stop. There are still areas within the plan that we can continue to explore. So focusing on diversion for businesses in the CND sector and continuing to enhance our education program. And then we have other work behind the scenes that's included in our work plan. So we will continue to undergo and undertake those initiatives. And just to wrap up, I just wanted to touch on our Advisory Committee. They have been instrumental in shaping all the work that has gone into the solid waste management plan. So we are proposing to keep them active. So as we develop new programs and policies and education material to really have them available as our sounding board, as we continue to work towards those elements of the plan, their ongoing knowledge of the public and their communities as well as the industry input that they provide has really been a benefit to the plan work. And lastly, just the key milestones that the group has really helped with. So those guiding principles that were formed from the New Tell, New Sacred Principles, which is a really meaningful piece of work that has helped guide decisions and planning, those goals and targets, the two phases of engagement. The Advisory Committee has been very active in helping in that space, and then the eight draft strategies. So, that completes my presentation. So that uh completes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or open it up for discussion. Thank you.
Giving something. Well, thank you for the presentation. It was very enlightening and informed. Are there any questions from director? Oh, well, we go Director Boyko. You're awful quiet, Director Boyko. Are you saying something? Because right, you're still muted. You're still muted. All I see is hand signals.
How about now?
All right, there we.
Surprised I'm the only one with questions because this is one of our largest costs in the entire valley. Okay, um. So one of the things that we did here is we went back to the people, the residents of the. ACRD, which is always a good thing, get their opinion. But we asked them essentially the same question that we asked them four years ago with multi-stream. Source separation at rural residential homes. So resoundingly, we've had the same answer twice, that the electoral areas are not interested in this. I would highly recommend the staff and all the other directors that we do not go ask again in three more years. And upset the public further than we just did. Because you got a very clear thing that that's not what people are looking for. I'm also surprised that we had more people in Beaufort complete the survey than in Cherry Creek. And a ton of people in Sprout Lake, so there must be a lot of passionate people in Sprout Lake about this, which I wholeheartedly support. Thank you very much. I got another question, but I'll wait till someone else goes ahead.
If I can comment on that, uh so uh the the plan once completed, uh really is is sets out a ten-year framework, so. Uh, we would not be back in three years. Um, and I I I think the phase three that was identified in in the presentation. Is really looking to hone in and have further discussion on those other elements. Um, that that we uh that the public said that they would like to have more discussion around, like the construction demolition. Uh, like multifamily, sort of more of an urban setting, how we can introduce uh uh cost-effective services there. Um, and as as well as the uh the elements that are currently not uh being accepted at the um at our landfills. So those are all various strategic elements that uh we're going to further uh flush out. And the next time we go to the public, we'll be targeting conversations around those elements so that. We can have a strategy that is also publicly endorsed. But good comments. Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. I have the one comment about blue bins. If we can get the price in Cherry Creek, the same as Beaver Creek, it probably would be. Better, but because they have it for free, but um that's a price people on rural areas can actually enjoy, but I have Director steer.
Thank you, uh Chair Sparrow. Um, I've been kicked off and I just got in, so I've missed everything other than um uh the end of of uh. Uh, Jody's presentation, so please forgive me if uh I was not able to hear any of the comments, but I I do have a few um uh that I'd I'd like to bring forward. Uh, this time and and I I really first to I. The work of Jody and her team, um having been involved on the advisory committee over the of the term here. Um, I I cannot overemphasize the amount of work uh and commitment uh that Jody and her team have put together uh in creating uh this plan in the process of moving forward. Um, I did have um maybe Jody just a a question. Um, uh, and and I first wanted to say I I appreciate it um uh the information there, and especially. Uh, when you touched on revisiting the purpose of the plan as as you outlined in there, it it's not just ticking a box uh for the ministry. Uh, but that being said, um I did have a question on if if um there is a timeline for us submitting uh the solid waste management plan to the to the ministry. And I do have a follow-up question.
So from my understanding, there is not, uh, so we have our two thousand and eight solid waste management plan that is still currently active. There's no expiry date on that plan. Um, but a lot of what is outlined in that plan um has been achieved. So that is why we've under uh we are moving towards developing a new plan with uh new strategies and and a new direction, but. Um, there is no timeframe uh to have it completed.
Uh, thank you, Jody, and a follow-up question, if I may. Um, it just uh in terms of the advisory committee, and and I appreciate um wanting to continue with the advisory committee. I do think it is important. I'm just wondering, uh, and and you probably remember more better than I do. Uh, uh, the terms of reference, uh, there there's no need for us to revise the terms of reference. We're we're okay to continue with. Uh, with the advisory committee under the present terms of reference.
Yeah, I believe so.
Great, thank you. Uh, and then just maybe one more. I I don't know while I was offline there. Um, if um if the motion had been uh made uh in terms of the recommended uh motion that was uh in our agenda package.
You know, the motion has been made, you said, we're just doing discussion and asking questions for Jody. Um, but I have one more uh director wants to ask a question first, if you'd like.
Thank you, Chair.
Um, it was a very good presentation. Thank you very much. Well done. Lots of work. Uh, I have a couple of questions. Um, we don't have a long-term agreement with our present landfill. Um, so I'm really happy all the years we worked well with the Shishat and so forth, and. I guess I'd be very happy if we could continue and extend that. Um, the other question I have that fits part of this is, so if we have to transfer, if we can't get extension here, then. We'd have to transfer and send it out of the region. Whereabouts would that be?
If I may, I'll uh maybe I'll speak a bit to that because I've been leading a lot of the work with the landfill working group. Um, and we have had a very good working relationship and we continue to build on that. And so we are hopeful that having more time to have that discussion will help us to continue that um good relationship. Um, if we are looking at export, uh potentially, so the. Cowichim Valley Regional District is the example that we know of, and they export to Washington State at this current time. Um, but that wouldn't necessarily be what we would do, but we would look at different options if we were not able, if we had to close our landfill. So that is a huge process that we would hope to avoid.
Thank you. You just had one other question. In the motion, it says more time. What is the definition of more time? A year, two years, six months?
Um, and I'll speak to that as well. Um, so we can do all of the work concurrently. So we're looking at between eighteen to twenty-four months. So we are expecting a year and a half to two years.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. I think that also ships our garbage out to Washington State too, because they have no landfill either, so. Uh, yeah, that's an expense, isn't it? So, um, I have Director Boyko next.
Thank you, Chair. I think a more relevant example is Cal, wherever we're sending it to Cumberland, that's more. Recent relevant, but at the same time, we want to make sure we have a good relationship and go for more than a five-year term, go to twenty or thirty years. And not have to keep revisiting this. The First Nations also have to get rid of their garbage in a timely or a clean manner, and they want it to keep going. Um, my question is about how many man-hours are we looking at for the next uh year and a half, two years? Are we talking thousands and thousands of man-hours that we're expecting to keep putting into this project? I got one follow-up after that.
Um, in regards to the work time requirements, really, the only addition that we would see in this extension is just having some regular touch base meetings with the solid waste advisory committee. Um, so essentially, the work that we have to do with the DOCP update and working on the tenure and the construction and demolition work, all of that work is already. Basically as part of our work plan, so I don't see that as additional hours for doing this extension. Um, then we will basically pick up the solid waste management plan um at step. Four and basically doing phase three of final public engagement, so I don't see an extensive amount of hours.
So the additional time is just to give time for additional engagement, produce a report at the end. But we're not going to hire more staff, except for the one open position potentially. And we're not going to um report on that. Okay. Thank you, Jenny. Um, one other question, uh Director Sparrow mentioned that the blue bin in Beaver Creek is free. It is not. It is in a separate line item for. The Beaver Creek taxpayers that they pay. In Beaufort, we don't get it and we don't pay for it, but in Beaver Creek they do. Thank you.
And I would love to speak to that, and I love that it was brought up. Um, so Beaver Creek has recycling collection because that was grandfathered in at the time. Um, curbside recycling collection is subsidized by Recycle BC. So um at the time, they had wanted the service. We originally paid for it at the regional district. And then when um Recycle BC came on board with funding, that basically reduced that price to zero. However, since that time, they have set up policies where they will not expand curbside recycling collection. Into any areas that do not have um a publicly or a collective community uh garbage system. The reason that they have that strict rule is because what they found is that in areas where there's only recycling collection, they have really high contamination. Because if you only have one thing that you can put out of the curb, you put everything in it. And so what they've said is they will consider extending our uh subsidy program into other areas. But that does have to come with the other streams. That was really why we did engage and talk with the community about that, because we know that a lot of places like Cherry Creek would like to see recycling. But we can't give it as a a single service. Um, so at this time, unless we want to just charge for it, so I should clarify, like Cherry Creek could get. Just recycling, but it would be something we would be paying for and not receive as provincial subsidies for, so just for clarity.
Okay, thank you for that clarity. Yes, I I think we had to go and get um curbside, uh curbside pickup for all the residents first before we can get blue bin and. Let people just, they collectively pick their garbage, make them a dump, so that's a non-starter, unfortunately. And the other thing about it is, you give a blue bin and you do recycling, and then you have your garbage uh waste, even though it gets lower in volume. It the cost doesn't go down. It's still a daily per month pickup cost, so. Even though you're giving less out, you don't get a reduction, and it's not by weight, so something else to think about. Are there any more questions? Seeing that, would somebody like to make a motion? Look, oh, Tom, do you have a question?
Yes, the target. No, I I I was just gonna make the motion there, Mike.
It's all you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, that the committee of the whole received the phase two public engagement summary document for information.
We have a motion, we have a seconder. Have they, Dr. Sega? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed and carried.
And and that the committee of the whole recommend that the Oberneke Clockwood Regional District Board of Directors approve the review. Revised timeline for development of the solid waste management plan to accommodate additional actions as identified in this report.
Moved and seconded by Kurt Kasega. Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed, here, thank you. Now we're down to item six, reports, ACRD procedural bylaw review presentation by Heather Zander.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Okay, so today starts the uh review process of the ACRD procedures bylaw. Uh, so as we have reminder, the local government act requires that a procedures bylaw be established. Um, and this bylaw provides the general procedures to be followed by board and their respective can uh committees in conducting their business. Uh, the bylaw was last updated in twenty twenty-one, um to add the reference to electronic meetings. Um, this came after COVID. Um, and over the last year, the board has requested um that the procedures bylaw be reviewed and updated, so that's what we're starting on today. So this is the agenda for today, uh for today's discussion. Um, we'll review um. The process for reviewing the bylaw. We'll describe other work that may come out of this review. We'll touch on uh legal requirements, and then we'll start reviewing the procedure bylaw components. So this discussion is going to take place over several Cal meetings over the next few months. Um, and including a second meeting next week on Wednesday. So I'm going to guide you through different sections of the bylaw. I'll also provide you some recommendations and provide you uh time to discuss and make decisions regarding changes. When these discussions are complete, I'll draft the bylaw, which will be presented for consideration. Uh, to make sure that I've captured all of your um required changes. Um, the draft bylaw uh is required to be advertised to the public. Which outlines the changes that we've made, and then again, again, it'll come back to the board for adoption. So there's some considerations that I'd like uh the committee to think about as we move through this. Um. There are certain things that belong in a procedures bylaw, and then there are other things that will better belong in either policy or other bylaws or guidance documents. So we do not want to make the procedures bylaw this monster document that captures everything. We really only want to stick to um legally required. Um, things and um things that help the board and committees, um, you know, do their do their business. So I fully recognize that there's going to be other work that comes out of this bylaw review. Um, so we'll we'll look at those things, and I'll make a note of those things and summarize the additional work that needs to be done. Um, the the bylaw requires public advertising each time we amend it, so it's not something that we want to amend several times a year. So I'm just gonna stop there and to see if the committee has any questions before I move on.
Thank you. Are there any questions from directors? Being none yet.
Thank you. Okay, so this procedure bylaw applies to the regional board, the hospital board. All fifteen of our committees, it applies to our two parks commissions and our six APCs. So the fifteen committees that we have are formed under the authority of the Local Government Act. Um, and the commissions were all formed by bylaw. Um, so there's three bylaws that form the two parks commissions and the APCs. They're all very outdated. They all likely need to be updated. Um, and we know that, so that will be one of the things that comes after this bylaw review. The only committee that the board is required to have, legally required to have, is the accessibility committee. Um, so just to reiterate, all committees and all commissions do need to require are are required to follow the procedures bylaw. Um, throughout this process, I'm going to highlight where we uh meet that requirement and where we're inconsistent and need to need to modify our practices. So each of these committees has between three and twenty-six members. So there's significant administrative work to maintain the contact information for each committee, sending outlook invites, Zoom invites. As well as preparing agendas for each committee. Uh, so in twenty twenty-four, we had a hundred and three board, hospital and committee meetings. Each of these requires an agenda, which includes staff reports that are developed by departments. And then reviewed by our corporates officer and our CIO prior to going on an agenda. And each meeting has an associated set of minutes that are adopted and placed on the ACRD um agenda and websites. Um, I mentioned this as we have a high number of committees that require a higher number of staff hours to maintain. So please keep this in mind if you're ever in a position where you're recommending um creating new committees. Um, we we have a lot of committees, and I'd ask the committee to consider whether one of the existing committees can be utilized to. Um, deal with business um that we might have. Uh, additionally, we had about thirty advisory planning commissions in twenty twenty-four, and we had five parks commission meetings. So these are the three things that are absolutely required in a procedures bylaw. They're out outlined or outlined in uh legislation. Uh, we're gonna go through each one in more detail, and I'll provide opportunity for discussion. So the first thing I'd like to touch on, and I will stop when I'm um done sharing some information with you, but um. One of the ideas is to look at um having a consent agenda. So it can be utilized for non-controversial items where there's expected that there'll be no further debate required by the board. So it's not a separate agenda. It's just a separate item on the regular agenda near the beginning of the agenda. And should um an item on a consent agenda be um want to be pulled out, um a member can do that. Um, by making um a um motion, doesn't need a seconder. Um, so. You could include things on a consent agendas such as adoption or receipt of minutes, endorsement of committee recommendations. Um, correspondence not requiring action and routine staff reports. However, I would um, I would recommend only adding things that are truly non-controversial, such as meeting minutes for receipt and or adoption. Um, and correspondence for information, so where we know that there's no further action required. Um, a consent agenda can really um help to speed up board meetings instead of spending, you know, five or six minutes adopting minutes. um which are just routine and um if there's no issues with them, be an idea to uh save time on our board meetings. So I'm gonna stop there.
I have a question from Director Boyko about this. And then Director.
So we're looking to do things that have been selected in the future to potentially cause more time in a board meeting, such as recording votes and things like this. And one of the things that has been a comment opposition is it will take too long. So if we do something like this, I'm okay with it. And we can save time that could be used for more open, transparent work that we do. So the public can see what we do and people can be accountable for what they vote for. That being said, this also requires, this will go very fast in a meeting. So directors will need to be well prepared for their meeting in advance, have everything all laid out pre-motion. You know, have a good book of notes on everything they're gonna talk about. So kids, you're not gonna have time at the meeting to read it. So as long as people are be aware of what's required, I'd say this might be a good way to go. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I think had Director Steer, he still have your hand up or is it taken down?
Uh, it is still up, but basically um I, I concur completely with Fred's point. We use the consent agenda at the district of Dofino, um, and we adopted that a couple of years ago. Uh, it has been a very useful tool in helping to expedite uh the meeting on those routine things. And as Fred pointed out, um, those uh and, and as Heather sorry pointed out, uh, those controversial items are not uh on a consent agenda. It's merely uh when we go through ten different uh minute uh uh acceptances that that takes unnecessary time. And, and that being said, within the consent agenda, there is always, if there is an error or omission in those, that can always be pulled out. It does not negate uh our ability to do that. So I completely concur with Fred's point and, and I'm very much in support of the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you for that. Any more directors? Yeah, actually I have one. Um, can we use our EA meetings to do our land use items and then come as a consent agenda to the big board? So we wouldn't be spending about an hour talking about someone's fence when everybody's sitting around and there's fourteen members listening to six members. We can, we can do that? That would be something I'd look at because that way it, it is six people talking and eight listening to us. So that's not very good.
Um, that's something we can definitely look into if the committee um would like us to. Um, myself and Alex have had some uh initial discussions about this. So um we know that the regional district of Nainmo does it and we looked at their schedule and they, they do have their EA meeting uh once a month um before board meetings, so that it is a consent agenda that comes to um the board. Um, it would be, it would mean more uh EA meetings so that planning applications aren't held up. So um, yeah, I'll see if there's some more input on that first.
Thank you for that. And Director Boyko, your hands up?
Yeah, I was gonna say exactly what Heather just talked about there, Chair. Um, it will be more meetings. We don't want to hold up people that are doing rezoning applications or anything. So it's gonna be a lot more meetings. There's a lot more cost to the public because we're having these meetings. Staff time and our time is not free. Everyone pays for that. We gotta make sure that's well upfront. So to save time for some other people because we're want to talk about something else, we have to be very conscious that the additional time, effort, meetings cost is involved before we make that decision. Thank you.
Thank you for that. My other thought on that is if you want to put meetings in the evenings, it would be a great one. Put in the evening so planning committee could show up and you can get people out to meetings because it would directly affect that. Just a thought.
I'm gonna talk about that in about two minutes.
Okay, any more questions so far? I see none. Okay, back to Heather.
Okay, so I will assume based on the discussion that the committee is happy to um move forward with the consent agenda. And what I'd like to do with respect to the EA meetings is to do some more research and bring that back to another committee, the whole meeting for further discussion. Okay. Okay, so the next item is um the member reports. So at the end of the board agendas, we have a list of electoral area reports um and municipality reports and First Nation reports. So the column on the left is what happens at the first board meeting of the month and then um some committee meetings are reported out at the second board meeting of the month. Um, and for, for whatever reason, um, some committees are listed, some committees are not. I have not made changes to this over the last year and a half that I've been in this position, but I do recognize that all, not all of our committees are listed. Um, and that has been raised by the board in the past. Um, this does uh create a lengthy, add length to the board meeting. So um the proposal that I have to this committee is to just change what we write on the agenda um and just have a section for member reports. Um, the same on the first and second meeting for the board and the same for all committee meetings. And that would just um be up to the chair of the meeting to ask if there are any member reports from anybody attending the meeting. And so this could be electoral area reports or it could be any committee that you've attended. It would just really require that um each director is prepared with uh their notes and be ready to make a verbal presentation um on their specific item. So it would just speed up, speed up this section of the agenda. So I'm gonna stop there and let you carry on.
Thank you. Oh, see if you have any questions. We have Director Steer. Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, um, uh, once again, this is a, a tool that we've used at the district of Dofino and it's a very valuable tool. Um, if there is no report, as is often the case, um, uh, then we have to go through a process of you saying there is no, no report. So this gives the uh, when there is a report and if a, a director chooses uh to give an update, say on their, on their area, uh, they can certainly uh have that included as the chair will be able to uh, and we, we use what's called business initiated by council. Um, and that's in a very effective way, uh, when there is something to be broadcasted, uh, that they have the opportunity to do that. And that's for our committees. Um, as well as what I do for the ACRD at the district of Dofino, I will, uh, I will uh give updates as to uh what transpires at our meetings. So I think it's a very, uh, a very positive idea, uh, once again, uh, for streamlining meetings, um, and uh it has great value and, and uh for the board to be able to take a look at this, uh, it, uh, as something that I think would be important to uh bring forward in our procedures by law.
Yeah, thanks for that. Any more directors? Um, my question is, is it gonna still be as a point form on the agenda? Like, so it kind of, it kind of triggers me to remind myself to get things and facts together. Not just be like this right here in the.
It'll just be like what's shown on the screen. So it's up to you to remember what you've done in the last months and um any committee meetings that you've attended or anything that's important to.
That's a big ask. Okay, thank you. I have a Director Boyko.
I agree with both of those comments that just came up. It's nice to have a visual representation and say, hey, this is member reports because you're gonna like, oh, is it the first week of the month or is it two weeks of the month and then blah, blah, blah. So having a little something in there to say, we're gonna talk about each electoral area and the cities in one thing, and then we're gonna talk about committees at the next one. I think having that still in there as a visual prompt, like Director Sparrow just said, that would be awesome, even if we just glance over it. It just gives people a reminder that this is to happen. And then I agree with everything uh um Director Steer just said as well. Thank you.
If I have, Director Solder.
So just a quick question. Okay, so the first and the second board meeting. It could be if I wanted to talk about the city of Port Oburne, I could bring it to the first because the first um board meeting or something else happened, I can bring it to the second board meeting. It's an open for anybody. So you can, it doesn't have to have that all like what we have now, right?
There, yes, that's what I'm proposing is that it just say member reports. And if there's something the city has relevant from the last two weeks, you bring that forward. And if it's a committee, that's fine as well.
All up, sure.
I think that's a, a great idea because things change, you know, it doesn't, everything's not on the one month. So I, I like the idea where it's, you can do the first or the second.
I think it's really good to list them, like some of your members have suggested, sorry. But the chair could just say any reports. So then the cooler wants to make a report, can make a report. So it speeds up a lot of this. So, but it makes sense to list them. I think it helps.
Even if it's a some after the west somewhere else behind the agenda, as a reminder, because yeah. Old age is a fun thing. Okay, um, and I have Director Boyko again. Is that Director Ross? Director Ross first, sorry. I see your hand.
Well, yeah, I, I like the idea because you can use the area report or a committee report on either one. So it actually expands what we can talk about. Thank you.
And Director Boyk.
Yeah, I think, thank you, Chair. I think what Director Counselor Solder said to clarify that it could be used for anything of the above topics. It actually allows us to talk about more options in a more wider format. So that clarification is awesome. So you talk about exactly what Director uh, um, what Susan just said. So I'm all for it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any more questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now we'll move into uh the legal requirements. Um, we're gonna go through each one of these separately. So um I'll just move on. Okay, so section six is related to time and location of meetings. Um, so I've listed all of the sections of the by law that we currently have and um the only changes um I want to open up for the committee for discussion is related to the start time of board meetings. Uh, currently they begin at one thirty on Wednesdays. Um, and the board has requested a discussion on that. And then the other change was just related to the schedule of board meetings for the year. Currently, we um have that posted by January fifteenth and I think it's more appropriate to have that uh posted by the end of December so that the board and the public know when our meetings are for the following year. So I will stop there.
Yeah, thank you for that. And do I have any questions? Right? Oh, Director Boyko, there you go.
Perfect. Thank you, Chair. I strongly suggest that we change the board meetings till the evenings. They don't have to start late. We can start them at five thirty or five o'clock or something. There's a variety of reasons for this. And I think Director Steer brought up some of them about a couple of months ago, but it increases attendance for directors that have jobs during the day. Now, there's a lot of us to do and a lot of us that don't. But making sure we have time to get there and put our full effort in is always good. It increases the ability for public to actually come here and watch meeting. Like how many public are in the gallery right now? Like I can't see it in a camera, but I don't think there's anybody there. So we have very low public attendance. We have very low people watching on Zoom, but in the next day or two, there'll probably be a couple hundred people watch the video on YouTube. So the public is charged to actually want to have engagement with the board, want to watch what's happening. And that's a good change over the past couple of years. And I think that's a great thing to see. So they can either talk at the end of the meeting, submit a question. They're all working to pay their taxes that we're spending. We should give them the opportunity. One other positive thing is it increases the pool that we can draw from as a public for future directors. All right, we're gonna get some, hopefully some fresh blood, some younger faces in here to helpfully bring some new fresh ideas and things like this. But by having the meetings during the day, they're all shut off. They're all working. They're all got kids. They all got things happening. Having them in the afternoon, early evening, give us, you know, three, four hours maximum to do our thing is a great. One of the cons that's gonna be brought up here very shortly by someone is it's gonna take extra staff time and extra costs and all this kind of stuff. So if you look at the staff that's in the meeting here right now, most of the people are exempt as in they don't get paid overtime. So we'd have to figure out a schedule and that's not up to us. That's up to the C I O to figure out a schedule for staff to say, hey, we got a meeting in two weeks in the afternoon. You can take today off and come to the next couple of meetings or take the morning off or something like that time of the that's all up to whatever's going on. But that's not a union thing. That's a staffing. And I think that can be easily accomplished. That's what I like to say. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. I have Director Roth, Director Steer, Directors.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to, I'm in total agreement with uh Director Boyko and I'm gonna use myself as an example. Um, I work full time and no one covers for me whenever I'm in a meeting. So my work just piles up. So it makes my life a lot harder. So time is more important to me than the money. Certainly more important to me. Just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks for that. And Director Steer.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, um, I, I'm not gonna reiterate all the points that Fred has brought up. I concur with all of them. We made this change uh many years ago in Tofino. Um, for those exact reasons, it has been very successful. Um, I will, uh, like last night, we had over seventy five people at council meeting, uh, and it uh was well attended and it gives people the opportunity to um uh then one of the, one of the issues that has come up historically on with this conversation has come up at the ACRD before. Certainly those of us uh in those remote areas uh to come down uh to be able to attend in person because of the ability now to have uh our, uh, to be able to zoom in, that constraint in the wintertime of us having to travel over that road is now been negated. So I think many of the, all of the positives uh that Fred uh alliterated to um are, are ones that I would support. And, and I would also just in, in terms of the commenting on uh when to put the schedule out for the, for the next oncoming year and, and Heather, you had mentioned December. If, if there is any way to bring that um uh forward uh to say even November, and I know the difficulties in being able to do that, but the reason I, I say that is it's very helpful for those of us to be able to schedule our, uh, once again, to be able to schedule our work environments uh around that. So I can plug in uh for twenty, well, for twenty twenty six, say for next year. Uh, if I have that information out of an earlier date, it helps me, uh, you know, and I know it's personal, but it does help in the ability to schedule our, our work. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that. Um, Director Solder and then Director Sega.
Uh, thank you. So the city has night meetings and we have low attendance very, we have the same two or three people that do come to our night meetings and there's times that we have gone till like close to eleven o'clock and we still have three things on the agenda on our this just, just putting, playing devil's advocate here. And, and you're right. Um, Director Boyko, Boyko, regarding the overtime, I'm just kind of curious on, to know the overtime and we do have staff that's exempt too, but I believe the staff here gets um exempt plus you get um holidays or something like that. Or do you get time off or in lieu of overtime? Maybe that can be clarified.
Yeah, the exempt contracts have uh time off in lieu. So there's varying amounts depending, but most of all of these have contracts include time off in lieu of overtime. Um, and then of course, um, that still, we still have to manage schedules. At the end of the day, the time off in lieu does compensate for regular activities, which this would be deemed regular, but if um, if we are at a point where, let's say somebody had five days off in lieu, which is the maximum, um, but we ended up where uh, you know, every week you're working a twelve or fourteen hour shift, which adds up over the year, then it's at some point it's we do what Director Boyko flags, who are saying, look, take a morning off on these days so that you're actually still managing a healthy schedule. Time off and lose really meant to compensate some of those things that come up, but at the end of the day, we want to maintain healthy schedules for staff. And the expected hours um are always within a forty hour week. And so we look to manage that. So um, you're both correct. Uh, we have the tools that Director Boyko had spoken to me as well. Um, so what he brought up is, is accurate. We have the ability to manage those schedules and we certainly would, and we serve at the pleasure of the board.
Thank you. Just, just a quick thing. Um, the city being on council for many, many years, we've had night meetings and if it was a contentious issue, of course, we had the room full at night and um there has been a call for some more night meetings and um right now we are status quo, but um, I'm just putting, would people turn out? Yes, most definitely to, in, in, I'm talking on a city's perspective that um they would turn out on the contentious issues, but we still get the same crowd that comes in, which appreciation is there. So um and during the day, when we do day, we still get the same crowd that would come out at night. So that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Can I guess one question about that time will lose, like in union contracts, there's like time to have double time. Is it a one for one thing when you work past your regular schedule hours or?
Yeah, uh, time to lose a blanket. So it, it doesn't like, so exempt staff don't get a one point five or a double time uh when it comes to overtime. So it really is managed on a one for one. Um, but there's um it, it, it's a blanket catchall and what, uh, what we also do is just monitor. It's the health and well-being of staff as well. There is differing legal opinions about time off in lieu out there, which is why I'm cautious on my uh explanation. And if you look at um, at various court cases, uh, you'll see that different nuanced interpretations have been challenged at times with their. And if you look at, at various court cases, you'll see that different nuanced interpretations have been challenged at times with varying results. So that's, that's why I flag time off in lieu is there, and we use it appropriately. But we also make sure that we're managing the health and wellness of our staff by the golden rule of what a standard week ought to be. And so we always aim to manage within a standard week.
Thank you. Being on the union side and representing them, it is a little more trickier than just shipping time right out. I have Director Seega, Director Boyko, and then Director Steer.
Hi, thank you very much. Yeah, Director Steer addressed some of my concern about driving at night from remote communities, which is a problem. There's also the issue of power outages. If we're relying on Zoom to attend meetings in the evening, in the wintertime, well, probably the roads out of the power is out, I suppose. And the only other thing I can think of is, are we going to have specific meetings in the evenings? Like, I can see a Board of Directors meeting where things are passed for the final time to be in the evening. So hopefully, there's more public participation. But when we have back-to-back meetings, if we have like a committee of the whole like we do today, as well as a Board of Directors meetings, this is going to take us into very late meetings in the evenings. So would it just be the Board of Directors meeting that isn't, is an evening meeting? And then the other issue is if we are wanting young parents to participate as board members, 5:30 is kind of the witching hour when you have to feed your kids. So, yeah, there's a lot of things to consider, but I think I'll just go back to, would it just be the Board of Directors meeting in the evening?
Okay, thank you for that. We'll take in consideration. I have Director Steer, I believe, next.
Thank you. And through the chair, yeah, and, and I was going to touch on, on the concern of Beta as part of that response. But, and I think one of the things that we've done in Tofino that was successful when we had this conversation and decided on, on a 4:30 timeframe, it would be able to capture the vast majority of people who are working those eight to four schedules in contingent, well as the provision of daycare would also have more, more uptake in that. And then I would, I think it's an excellent point, Director Seega, around which meeting, and I think you're correct. We, the Committee of the Whole meeting could be, depending on, of course, the opportunity. It's a committee of the whole, so it's actually really a lot about a committee of, of the board in those particular cases. So a lot of that interest area would, in all likelihood, be centered around in the board. And I'm not making judgment calls there. I'm just saying what, what the reality of, of committee of the wholes has been historically. So a daytime, the current day schedule that we have for committee of the whole may be appropriate in those. And we often don't have round budget season, obviously, many more, but generally, we, we have committee of the wholes when they're necessary. Or we can cancel them when they're not necessary. So I, hopefully, that may alleviate some of the concerns, but I would support having committee of the wholes in a daytime setting and, and the directors' meetings in, in the evening. And, and I would also suggest that 4:30 time has worked very well on the coast here for, for our, for our meetings. And I know the District of Uclulit has, has meetings roughly around that time as well.
Yeah, thank you for that. And now I have Director Michael.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, I agree. Even earlier, 4:30 is good. People get out a good time. Right now, we have it set up where our board meetings are adjourned at 5:30, so maximum four hours. So us going 11 o'clock at night, I don't think that will happen. And in two and a half years, I've been doing this. We've never had a four-hour board meeting at the A C R D. So we can always get to a point where, say, listen, this is too long. We're going to put off the rest of the agenda, vote, and move it on to the next meeting. So I don't predict midnight meetings or anything like that happening. We can also have something that says we'll start at 4:30, and if we go past three and a half hours, call that eight o'clock. Then we'll make a decision whether to carry on or go like that. But I don't think we're going to be up, you know, way past midnight having meetings or anything like that, because that currently does not happen with their current schedule. Thank you.
Thank you. Let Daniel answer that one.
And so I, I, I think those, those are very good comments, and they touch on, on something I was going to bring up as well. Obviously, where we talk about when adjournment takes place, the number 5:30 maybe ought to be replaced with a maximum duration of a meeting, i.e. if you're saying three and a half hours or four hours, and then, and then a check-in is provided whether the board wants to continue or whether they adjourn at that time. I think the key element is making sure that the board remains fresh enough to make good decisions. We all know that at the end of some of these marathon runs, it can be really exhausting to be fully engaged. And so at the end of the day, we want to make sure good, good debate and dialogue continues and good decisions are being made. I, I would ask whether or not the board would entertain staff coming back with, with some variety. And, and the only reason why I raise variety is that we've also indicated that we want to have some meetings on the road. And we got, we actually got equipment to do that. In some cases, being on the road for an evening meeting will be fine because you can still zoom in. But in other cases, like in May, we're going to have a meeting in Anacla, and we're tying that in with, with a community check-in. You, you may want to actually have a 1:30 meeting that allows for, for some, some daytime travel. Do you still want to keep the ability to have a handful of these meetings at 1:30 for those purposes? And so if you do, then what we would do is come back with a hybrid model that allows you sort of to set the schedule annually, knowing that the bulk are in the evening, but there's a handful that may be in the daytime, and we point that out and reasons for. So I'm just curious if you have comments on that idea.
Thank you for that. I have Director Steer now, and then Director Solder.
Yeah, thank you. And through the chair, thank you, Daniel. That, that's an excellent suggestion. I completely forgot that we were looking at having A C R D board meetings in other communities. And so having some flexibility within, within our procedures bylaw around times of meetings, I certainly would concur with. And we can have, as, as indicated, as our board meeting schedule, if it's established early enough in the, in the season to be able for us to schedule those. I think that's an excellent idea to have that flexibility within the schedule.
You think of that. And now Director Solder.
I, I, I think evenings, meetings on the road, I have qualms about that. And, and the reason is driving back, when people are driving back, safety issues. Also, what if you stay the night, right? Then the hotels, sometimes those hotels are not, they're expensive. And, but I do, I love the idea of going from community to community. Back when I was on the regional district at permanent for long term, even going to the communities was great because you got to see what's happening in their communities during the day, because at night you can't really take a look at what's going on, and you got to meet a lot of people during that time. So I think that's fantastic, but I do have questions regarding evenings on the road.
Thank you for that. I was going to talk about the length of board meetings. We've had two Cal meetings so far this year that we stopped because we ran into the 1:30 meeting. So we knew we're brutal, aggressive with our tones when we're talking. So if we do that, but in the afternoons, we're going to be pushing close up to six hours from seven. Well, that's going to be very late. Unless we just, unless we separate the meetings between the Cal meeting, the board directors, which means now we turn the staff into afternoon shift people. There's a second possibility. So needs to be more thought on this, but I have Director Boyko and Director Steer again. Okay, Director Boyko.
Thank you. We can always put what Daniel said is a time limit and whether it's three, three and a half hours to keep you all fresh. And then that gets rid of the whole six-hour meeting thing, whatever. This only happened a couple of times a year where you have a long meeting, and usually it's something like what we're talking about right now, that we want to change things or budget meeting or something contentious, whatever that might be in the future. It happens, but it's rare. It's not a weekly or monthly occurrence. I also would like to take into account what Daniel said is we set the agenda at the start of the year, and we add some flexibility. There's only one board, board meeting a year that's on the road. So having one out of the twenty-six board meetings we have, that's a minor detail. That should not stop having meetings at night just for one board meeting a year. Thank you.
You think for that. I have Director Steer.
Yeah, and I'll just quickly comment and through the chair, yeah, Mike. In terms of one of the interesting things, and I haven't brought up, is that we have both generally a Cal and a board meeting in the same day, back-to-back. I don't know, very few jurisdictions operate that way. Mostly have a committee of a whole on, on a separate day so that we don't have those back-to-back type meetings. I know that's probably a much larger conversation, but many communities and regional districts do not have them in the same day. So that, that might alleviate some of those concerns around having those back-to-backs and going much later into a meeting timeframe. So I'll just leave it there, but just something to consider.
Yeah, thank you. I have Director Seega.
Hi, thanks. I think this has been a really good discussion, and I'm just wondering, going back to our, Daniel's comment about the staff perhaps putting together some proposals for meeting times. Does that require a motion?
I don't believe it does. We just have a discussion here. They're writing notes down, and they'll come back with recommendations. So I think what you've done is what you need to do. I have one question as to the city, actually. You made some meetings in the evening, but not all meetings in the evening. Is that correct?
So our committee of the whole is at night, where the public comes in and can ask it whatever question. And our, our city business, which is the regular city meeting, is at two o'clock. So, and it's really short in discussions during the, the two o'clock meeting because we've discussed it at the committee of the whole. So it's just to ratify it. So that's how that works. And it's, and the public can ask questions during both meetings. So it, it works really well. Maybe not enough for the public because they would like to have more, much more interaction, but that's, that's normal for every public member.
Thank you for that. Director Lecresse, your turn.
I think evening meetings are a good idea. I'm just, normally, my day starts at five o'clock. I quite often work longer than that. When I come here in the daytime, of course, I'm not at work, so it's on my own time. But I, I think a 5:30 meeting, if we have a 5:30 meeting, a lot of the public is busy with dinner with their children. If we're doing an evening meeting to get the public involved, I think we're not going to get a lot of involved because there are family involved. I belong to a couple of other committees. We have our meeting at 6:30 in the evening, so it gives us a little time to get something to eat before the meeting. I know it pushes a little bit later in the evening, but if we have a three-hour meeting, then we're done by 9:30, which isn't too bad. And then you're going to get more public that can watch you on Zoom. So I'm not sure about the 5:30. I think that's a bit early if you're going to have an evening meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any more questions from directors? I don't see any. Okay, should we move along?
Perfect. Thank you. Okay, so you've given me lots to work with, and I'll come back to a future Cal meeting with some options. Okay, so moving on to Section Seven of the bylaw, notice of regular and committee meetings. So Seven A states that forty-eight hours notice for all board and committee meetings are posted by way of notice at the public notice, public notice hosting place. And defined in the bylaw is the public notice, notice place, and that is the lobby of the A C R D building and the regional district website. And I'm proposing to this committee is to change the definition to our website only. And that's because we have a corkboard in the lobby where we hang all of our agendas. But my office sits right outside of where that's posted, and the public are not going to this location to look at the agendas. We always provide agendas in this room for each meeting that we have, and we're always open to printing materials for the public if they come in. So in Seven B, I'm, I'm, there's a small change. It says that we leave copies of the agenda at the reception counter, and I would like to change that to the boardroom because that's our current practice is to provide the agendas in the boardroom so that if the public's coming in, they just grab the agenda and then sit down. And that's the only, those are the two changes for this section. So I'll stop there and see if the committee has any interest in updating the public notice place.
Thank you for that. I know it says forty-eight hours, which means we can get by 10:00 a.m. on a Monday, and we get them Friday at 4:30 or 5:00. Because I don't always have a chance to read them on the weekends, but people out there do, and they already criticized me about the end of the weekend. So I mean, the agenda had already got told that we should be going, but it's good that way. Yeah, but I think the law is forty-eight hours is all we need to get, but we're getting a lot more, which is great. So do I have any questions from the directors at all about these changes? Susan, you have your hand. Thank you. I can't see your hand behind because it's, it's got him with the core. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, maybe I can add something back there to make it easier. I'm not sure if this is the right place to discuss this, but I find the agenda packages are often two or three hundred pages long, and forty-eight hours isn't enough time. So I don't know how we can address that. But can we somehow fix that so we have more time to, you know, to read over and do our own research and, and understand everything in the agenda packages? Or meeting packages?
Yeah, I'll just say if we put our E A directors to have a consent agenda, we can put all this planning stuff in that agenda, and that would lower the big agenda. So it would, it'd be more meetings. I get that. But you, you have more time to read in between, but you have something to say about it?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that the, the legal requirement in our procedures bylaw is to send out the agendas forty-eight hours in advance. But we do send out board agendas and most committee agendas on the Friday prior to the meeting. So it's well in advance of the forty-eight hours. So I'll just clarify, are you asking for more than, more than that?
Yeah, so like that, to me, because I work full time, it's just the evenings that I could do it. And perhaps the weekend if I don't have something else, but I'm not thinking just, you know, selfishly. Sometimes our meeting packages are massive, and that's just not enough time. Like, I'm wondering if we could do it, you know, two weeks in advance even, or somehow make it so that we have more time to do our own research and feel comfortable with things. And, you know, I find so often I'm looking through the agenda saying, okay, that's got to do with Beaver Creek, that doesn't. And, you know, where, you know, where my focus needs to be, but really, I want to look at all and understand all of it.
Thank you. I'll get the handle answer, and then I'll go to Director Solder.
So the short answer is anything's possible. The, it's just what the trade-offs are. And so some of the larger elements that, that fill our, our agendas are planning matters, and they're often time-sensitive. So people are waiting for approvals, and, and so if we, if we drafted something two weeks in advance, it would just mean that, that ultimately, they, the, the package would be ready for, for a decision, but would have to wait longer prior to receiving that decision. And so the, the reason for that, that shorter window is that we really try and have things discussed, ready, up, and then, of course, you know, out the Friday, and then a decision made on the Wednesday, which is as, as short a timeframe as, as we were able to muster. There is the odd time where it is forty-eight hours before, but when we do a package on that short notice, it's usually a one or two item, and it's a smaller package. So the, the, my only concern would be the trade-off on, on people waiting for planning decisions. And because the, the other non-planning matter is something like, if I pick on the solid waste, the solid waste plan is not time-sensitive in the same way, and we could actually do things like we've done today. We have it in, in a committee meeting. You have time to discuss it. And sort of, you know, like, you'll, you'll have actually a number of kicks at the can before you, you make that decision. So we can certainly stretch some of these issues out over more meetings, but the planning matters are a really tough trade-off that I think the board would have to deliberate on their comfort level to having people wait longer for decisions.
Do I have Director Solder, then Director Boyko, and then Director Lecresse?
I think two weeks is a long time, and with the city, and I'm, I'm not going to speak for Tofino or anybody from the West Coast. They can speak on their own how they do it. We are the same way. We get our packages on Friday and, for the weekend, and we go to our meetings on the Monday. And I spend time, like, they're three, four hundred pages at times because we have reports, lots of reports in them. Also, I mean, there has been a lot of discussion in the city level to have a lot early, earlier. But again, we have grants, zoning, time-sensitive coming in, and that we need to have them at that time. Also, delegations, anybody that has delegations for delegations to come in, they have a certain cutoff date, like, I think it's Wednesday. Anybody that had delegations for delegations to come in, they have a certain cutoff date, like I think it's Wednesday. And or anything else being presented that needs to go into the package, it's Wednesday and and everything gets put into. Into the agenda from there on. So I would really caution that two weeks. I understand where Susan's coming, director is coming from, but. I, I would be really hesitant on that.
Thank you. I think Daniel might say something worth. Okay, Director Boyko.
Yes, thank you. There is a lot to read, there's a lot to do, but I do agree that we cannot be slowing down planning matters. People sometimes put in things. And from firsthand knowledge, I know it takes a year to do a rezoning or more. So we have to think a balance between being effective in reading everything we need to do and having informed decisions. But also people wait a long time to get planning stuff done already as it is. And I don't want to see that slow down. One good thing I want to talk about is. I made a request to have the presentations that we saw, like this one here, that is not in the agenda. Sent out to directors before the meeting and we got it yesterday afternoon late. But it did get us time to read this in detail. That. Is more than just having it on the screen for two seconds and having to read the whole thing so you can read it and prepare for it. So I would like this. Thing to continue where these presentations get sent to the board earlier. So we can have a detailed read because that helps have more effective meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And Daniel?
I'll, I'll comment on Director Boyko's just last comment and then I have other things as well. So. Yes, we, we can send out and, and, and perhaps things like presentations from delegations or staff. We can insist that those presentations be part of a package forty eight hours prior to. So maybe that would be sort of a trade off. One of the things to think of on those presentations, and I know it's been a, a subject of dialogue. Between staff and with delegations is that sometimes when these presentations go out. People are like, well, they're, they're meant to complement what I'm going to say and, and, and that is. It's, it's an important distinction that we want to make sure that even when the public receives something. You know, a slide deck is not a presentation in and of itself. It's just the compliment to and to make sure that, that we're aware of that, like. That they're meant to harmonize with some sort of verbal presentation. But yeah, we certainly could look at altering timelines on that one. And then I'll, I'll just add, there is another way to shorten. The size of the packages and and we can certainly discuss it. I know right away that there will likely be some negative. Pushback on it, but the board can delegate greater authority to staff, which other organizations do. Other government organizations do on a number of things. So planning matters. There's a lot that comes to the board that could actually be delegated authority to staff. So decisions wouldn't have to wait for. As many board meetings or any at all as the case may be. And I know that that's going to be a report coming from a consultant who's doing the review of the process. So that will be part of that discussion. And the other is the threshold on awarded contracts because the other time sensitive elements. That we have that would be impacted by a two week delay are contracts that we award. Currently, the threshold that we have is thirty five thousand. That's significantly lower than other organizations. Most organizations will follow trade organization, trade. Trade agreements and have a seventy five thousand dollar threshold. And again, we could produce a report to talk about what, if any, impact that would have in terms of the volume of reports. Coming to the staff, coming to the board from staff. If that would diminish and thus potentially reduce the size of reports. But those are two other angles away from a two week delay.
Thank you for that. And Director Lecourcy.
Just the updates. If there's an update, like you get it the day before, it doesn't give you much time to look at the update. Especially if you've gone through the whole paperwork, you spend hours at it and suddenly there's an update and you go, oh, how does that affect everything? And so that kind of a little difficult to deal with. I guess we just have to, but it's hard.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing with delegations when we're having outside agencies, especially provincial agencies. They're often quite sensitive with their presentations and sharing them ahead of time because sometimes they're presenting. New information to the board or making a specific request and they will be very specific to me not to share their presentation ahead of time. So. We just have to be cognizant of that.
Thank you. I'm wondering if you, the presentations go to the directors before the meeting? So we can have an idea what we're looking at and as opposed to going to the public and they can see it on the slide deck that's presented. Is that? Possibility or is either one or the other?
I think we, we can just discuss it just to make sure that. I'd like to have a conversation with Cynthia about it. So I can bring that back.
You're right. I have Director Seega next.
Sorry, I don't have my hand.
All right, it was Director Boyko. I couldn't see his hands over the camera.
Sorry, thank you. I do have concerns about overdelegation and I think our levels of the thirty five thousand dollars, anything above that needs to be done properly. I don't think we have a problem with that. Keeping that. Last year, we did a bunch of changes to the delegation ability of the planning department. And I don't want to have any changes to that and have more delegation abilities to the planning department as is. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Are there any more questions from directors? Okay, you ready to move on?
I am, thank you. Okay, so section eight. So this is for notice of special meetings. And I will recognize that we have not had a special meeting since twenty twenty two. But they could be helped for reasons related to a particular timeline for something procurement related. Or legislative requirement, we're required to adopt a bylaw by a certain date. And that date doesn't align with our current meeting schedule. So currently in our bylaw, it states that five days notice is required. Although the local government act only requires a minimum, minimum notice of twenty four hours. And this can also be waived by unanimous consent of all directors. So I, I'm proposing that we remove that five days notice and change it to twenty four hours to align with the legislation. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. It says vote of all directors. You mean all present directors, do you not?
I think it's all directors.
So we have to ask all fourteen. Which are their alternates? In order to get consensus. Daniel?
So my, my understanding, I'd have to double check on it and I can, but it is all directors and. The reason, the reason for it being all directors is that the legislation wants to prevent a quorum. Elected officials meeting and having a special meeting with no notice. Having enough to make a decision and have a unanimous vote of all those present saying this is a meeting. It could lead to. Decisions being made outside of the public interest and outside of the public eye. And so it is. If you're not going to provide that twenty four hours notice per law, we're saying five days, but the law is twenty four hours. Then, then unanimous vote of all directors, my understanding is all directors. So not only the ones that are present.
Yeah, thank you. Reason I ask is we don't have all directors present today, so we would not be able to do it today. I am Director Sola.
So the city's had to use it twenty four hour notice and of course we're less. Counselors than there is directors on the ACRD board. So we just. Email everyone and everybody agrees. We don't expect a phone call or anything like that. We want it in writing and it's through email or. Through text. So, yeah, just thought I'd bring that up. And we've had to use it just recently.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, hopefully that's Daniel, the other question.
There are scenarios and, and so the, the twenty four hour notice is posting twenty four hours in advance. So you don't need unanimous. Support, you just post twenty four hours in advance. It's if you cannot do the twenty four hours and you need to and, and there are circumstances. So. Like and, and the most common, and I'll, I'll just share this because it is the most common for any local government, is usually during bargaining. And so when you're bargaining with the collective agreement with unions, there are times when urgent decisions need to be made because there's timelines. That are either being arbitrated, mediated, or are part of decisions. And that's where the unforeseeable is like, well, we really need a decision and we need it by tomorrow morning. Okay, well, that's where. As either you do your twenty four hours notice or as Director Sola is saying, like you. You reach out to all directors to make sure that you can actually do this and, and meet the timelines of negotiations.
Just a quick thing, Daniel's absolutely right.
Thank you. And so communication that does not be in the meeting, it could be any way you get back to. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Any more questions from directors? Seeing none. Move on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so this section of the bylaws related to electronic meetings and participation. So the proposed change to this bylaw is to remove the requirement. That states that board members will advise the corporate officer if they're participating electronically in a meeting. This is not current practice. It's not legally required. So I'd like to remove that requirement. One item that we do need to discuss is consistency across all committees and commissions. So we're not legally required to hold all meetings electronically. In some cases, meetings are held in person such as the Banfield Parks Commission. If they're meeting in Banfield, they may just meet in person, not electronically. All committees and commission meetings are required to be open to the public unless they're closed for in camera reasons. All ACRD committees, with the exception of the Agriculture Advisory Committee, are live streamed. On the website and available to watch after the meeting ends. So all of our committees, with the exception of the AAC livestream. And then the Agriculture Advisory Committee and the Planning Commissions. Meetings are open to the public, but they have to register to attend the meeting. And these meetings are not livestreamed and they're not available to watch after the fact. So there has been some discussion by the board in the past about standardization across our committees and commissions. So I would like to open it up to the committee to discuss, discuss if there's an interest in standardizing. All of our electronic meeting requirements.
Yeah, thank you for that. I have Director Ross, Director Boyko right now.
Thank you. I did, I wasn't even aware of nine A two to give twenty four hours advanced notice. I'd like that gone because I haven't done it. I prefer Zoom over coming in person. It works well for me. So I would like it standardized and, and. You know, fitting in virtual to me is, is very important. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Director Boyko. Are you on mute or just?
Hello now.
We can hear you now.
Perfect. I agree with what Director Ross just said about removing the requirement for nine point, eight point two. That's not being done, so we should get rid of that. What was just mentioned about the live streaming and recording. I often find myself wanting more information about planning matters that come out of the advisory planning committees that I'm not part of, which is most of them. And having just a recommendation, no minutes, says staff supports this. Or staff doesn't support this, or the people said yes, or people said no. And there's no way for a director to go and get more information right now. I'd like to have the minutes for the advisory planning committees and the videos livestreamed and stored. And have that standard across all committees so that when a director that's voting on public money and people's lives with planning matters. Has access to as much information as possible. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm going to talk about the same one nine eight two. We noticed that sometimes you can't get here. Due to a whole bunch of reasons. And so, yeah, if we can get rid of that and these are some times to get here. Any more questions from directors regarding these issues? Is there a problem if we do all the stuff on the server for all of these videos or even more electronic stuff because. A lot more meeting minutes, a lot more video, a lot more space taken up than that.
I don't think there's any like IT infrastructure that's required to. To add these. We're already, like the APCs are all held on Zoom. It's just that we haven't enabled the, the livestream. So. That's just a setting that we need to change. Yeah, one other thing I, I did wanted to mention was the. We haven't been also consistent in the parks commissions and the way we. Advertise these meetings. We, we haven't been advertising these meetings in the same way that we do for all of our committees. And we haven't been sharing the minutes from these committees or from the commissions with the board. The APC minutes are shared in planning application. Planning applications that come to the board. So you're seeing it that way. But is there interest in having the parks commission meeting minutes come to the board?
Good question. Director Sola?
I think it's important. We, if you get all the other board meetings, the commissions and everything, I think you should, should get the parks too. Because people are really interested in our parks and I think it's important.
You're probably correct. There is one park in particular they're really interested in. So I mean, this might be more available for that. And it'd be nice, does this bylaw go to the where you have to post before meetings? I know you have to. For planning matters, you have to go to the newspaper and the public one. Does it address that? Because. I know we have a weekly newspaper, but it's not guaranteed. We'll always have a weekly newspaper.
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question.
That's normal. Like, I, I know for planning that if we put one in the paper and put online and something else, do we have to do that for this bylaw at all or not?
No, no, like the requirements that the planning department has to do for planning applications, that's, that's legislated and. The, the requirements of the procedures bylaw don't require notice in, in newspaper.
Director Boyko.
I agree with Director Sola, Counselor Sola. That more information is provided to the directors is better than no information. And the director can take the extra time if they so require. And if they're interested in a topic that is relevant to their area, they can dig in and make sure that they're represented. Their thoughts of their taxpayers are represented to their best ability and make sure the directors have that ability. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any more questions from directors? Seeing none.
Okay, these are the other legally required things in the bylaws. We're going to go through them one by one. Okay, so. Section three, there is no proposed changes. Section four and five, I propose to change the wording from CAO to corporate officer. Just because standard practice is for the corporate officer to call the meeting, inaugural meeting to order. And do the election of chair and vice chair. So I, I don't think there'll be any opposition to that. Okay.
Can I go back for a second?
Yeah.
You said in cases that cover by its bylaw, rules or apply.
Yes.
So do you have a numbered copy of that rule? Who are already going to use or does current copy, recent copy? How are we going to define which one we'll use? Because there are lots of copies out there.
Yeah, it's the most up to date version and Cynthia and I have the version. Yeah. Okay. Attendance at public meetings. There are no proposed changes with the exception in section C. The bylaw currently lists some meetings. I'm just proposing that we delete the mention of those meetings because it doesn't include all. The meetings, they're listed in the legislation, so it's just duplication and it's not required. I'll stop there.
Any questions so far in this area? Seeing none.
Okay. Section eleven is minutes of meetings to be maintained and available to the public. So I am not proposing any changes to the bylaw, but. We do, I did mention the planning, or sorry, the Parks Commission minutes and we will include that change. We have always had our minutes for available inspection, for inspection at the regional district office. However, that isn't regularly used by the public. However, that, that isn't regularly used by the public. Um, most public like go to our website for uh, reviewing past minutes. Um, but as I said, we've been inconsistent, um, for uh, APCs and commissions. So we will, we will include that change in this. So I will stop there. I think there's some questions.
Thank you. We have Director Boyko.
Thank you. So just to take a chair, just to clarify what was just said by Heather. Are we proposing that the APC AACC park minutes will be posted on the website to increase transparency and openness? Is that what's being proposed? Because if not, I would like to propose that.
Yeah.
And also allow the directors to have more information. Thank you.
Yeah. I think, um, we just need to be consistent across all of our committees and commissions. And one way to do that is just to do the same process for, for all of them.
I a thousand percent agree. Thank you very much.
Director Harath, you have your hand up?
I just wanted to confirm that too. And I'm, I would love to see them on the website. Thank you.
Give her that. Do we have any more questions from directors? Hearing none? Are we moving along?
Right. Uh, section thirteen, um, current bylaw states that if there's no quorum for a meeting, we'll wait thirty minutes. Record the names of members present and then adjourn the meeting. I'm just recommending that we change this, uh, to fifteen minutes.
Any questions from directors?
Okay. Um, and then section four, the agenda, um, must be prepared timelines for agenda distribution and two thirds requirement to allow for late business. So I'm not, um, recommending any changes, just updating the wording in the bylaw.
Okay. And are any questions from directors about changing the wording? Be more clear, I assume.
Yeah.
Oh, Susan, your hand up?
Is fourteen ABC, is that a legislative requirement?
One second. Yes.
Did you get your answer? It was yes, Director Ross. Okay, great. Any more questions?
Okay. And so that is the end, uh, for today of the material that I prepared. I wasn't sure how far we were going to get. So that's great that we made it this far. So, um, the next step is we are going to meet again next week. Um, we will continue on working through the bylaw, um, in order. Um, the items that you've asked for more information on, um, I won't bring back to next week. So I'm going to need more time to, um, do that research. Um, and yeah, I think I'll pause there.
Well, thank you for that. And this is step one. It was written on the very beginning. Many steps, I assume. Great. Are there any questions from directors? Would somebody like to accept this to board? No, they have their part? You know, on item seven, late business, there is no late business. It's a cap. Uh, question period. And there's nobody in the gallery. Is there anybody on Zoom or email?
No questions received out through Zoom and no questions received in the email inbox.
Yeah, thank you. And now we're on to section nine. So move by Director Solder, seconded by Director Seega, all those in favor? And it's Carrie. And that is the end of the meeting and we'll see you at one thirty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll see you guys later. And yeah, it'd be awesome to have some more public participation because what we're doing.